Like to welcome everyone to our September eighteen Select Board meeting. The first thing that we're going to be doing is having our public hearing regarding our rural district bylaw proposal from the Planning Commission. I think it's the last phase of a two-year task that's been, they've been working on to revise all our bylaws for zoning. And the Hugh Quinn is here, the chairman, our zoning director, Preston Bristow. And Jason, Jason Rasmussen from Regional Planning to help us to go through the last group of changes and the recommendations that they put forward. This hearing is here for Select Board input and questions and for the public to also have input and questions or any concerns that they have with these bylaws. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Hugh. And you could take us through what we have here and
Oh, can I take it out of this thing? Snap out.
Okay, broken.
Broken. Okay, can, can everybody hear me? I'm swell. Excellent. Okay, so thanks, everybody. I think what I'd like to do first, and Julie, I might ask you to wheel back a little bit because what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with the maps for a minute to kind of set the context of the big picture of the changes to the zones themselves. And then I'll kind of step through the executive summary, which really highlights, you know, where the majority of the changes are in the bylaw itself. And then we can certainly dive in to the text of the bylaws at any point in time as we go through the executive summary, if that makes sense. And then just anywhere along the way, if people have questions, just shout it out. So what we've got here for people that can see it is on the left is our currently adopted zoning map. And on the right is the proposed map. And the first thing I'll say is all of the stuff that's in this, around the village green and the village center districts, that's already been adopted. So that's not really what we're here to talk about today. So this kind of the village center area is already in place. So what we're going to be talking about is a couple of the rural districts and a few other districts that we've made some changes to. So visually, probably one of the things you can pick up right off the bat is there's a lot more green in the proposed than there was in the current. And the green represents basically one of our two proposed density-based zones. Today, as it exists up here, it's currently a five-acre lot size zone. And based on information that we've gotten through working with regional planning related to some of the information we see from the natural resources A and R map about forest connectivity blocks and current use patterns of land use. It seemed appropriate to sort of extend this least dense zone a little farther south. So that's what you're sort of seeing was mostly up here. And now to kind of support connectivity and also basically to reflect that largely about a lot of this land down here is in current use. We've made that's that zone bigger. Probably the other big difference between, you know, the green and the yellow, as you look at the maps. The current zoning is what we call fixed minimum lot size zoning. This is currently a minimum lot size of five. And the yellow is currently a minimum lot size of three. Our proposal is going to go to a density-based approach for the green. And we'll talk about that in more detail. So hold questions on density-based zoning for just a minute. But please understand that green and yellow will be density-based zones, and we'll get into that in a few minutes. The other thing that you'll probably notice is we've taken what was the existing residential forty and we've extended it a little farther north up one oh three and also along Route ten. So that's a change. And currently residential forty is a one-acre minimum lot. In the proposal residential, basically as residential two would go to a two-acre minimum. And then I think lastly, the dark red is what was our original mixed-use district. And what we've really done is we've split mixed-use into what we're calling village mixed-use, which is still in the red. And then we've created a zone called rural mixed-use, which picks up gassets, what used to be the adaptive zone. And then we've extended it out one oh three south. So, and that was primarily because we found that, you know, there is sort of a different set of uses that make sense for a rural mixed-use versus sort of what you would consider a village mixed-use. So we needed to break those up so that we could get the right appropriate uses in the right locations. So before I go on to the executive summary that gets into a little more detail about some of these zones and some of the changes, does anybody have any questions sort of at a high level?
So the question I have relates to the purpose for this. What is it we're trying to fix?
Well, a couple of things. In general or for a specific zone or?
Just in general.
Okay.
What's the, what's the rationale for the zoning change?
I would say the biggest rationale probably is, you know, we're trying to effectively create less density as you move away from the village center. So we're doing that. We're also trying to create what are called, you know, connectivity blocks. So corridors for wildlife to be able to move north and south. So if you looked at the A and R map for connectivity, I'll just, I'll show it to you. I think it's this one. You can kind of see, here's Chester and this whole area is a connectivity block for you know, wildlife migration. So it's a habitat kind of play. So that's another objective we were trying to meet. I think another objective is we understand that you know, a lot of the land is got a lot of different kind of topologies and topographies in terms of slopes and conditions. And we're trying to figure out how to achieve lower density where it makes sense, but allow landowners to actually maximize the land they have in terms of what they can do with it from a development point of view. And then I think lastly, we really wanted to look at, you know, I think largely if you looked at this map, you'd say, wow, it looks like pretty much, you know, three quarters of the town is sort of into this just vanilla three-acre zoning. And we felt there was some good reasons to do something a little different with mixed-use. And kind of acknowledge that there's more of a residential play in certain areas where in the past it was more you know, uses that weren't necessarily completely appropriate in what you would consider to be a residential area. So at a high level, that's, that's really what's driving it. Jason, I don't know if you want to add anything to that that I may have missed or Preston?
Hugh, that was, that was well, well said. I think I just, you know, I think highlight that, you know, looking at what we did before in the village, you know, we vastly increased the density there for, you know, village revitalization and housing and so forth. And now looking at the rural parts of town, we're sort of looking at a progression heading outside of the village that's getting more and more dense. As Hugh said, for wildlife reasons, it's the rural countryside. There's some scenic aspects to it. There's also some working landscape forestry, for example. You know, we want to make sure there's large lots that can still have forestry, things like that. So I think that also came into play. And the fact that, you know, we, we spent a lot of time looking at those maps, the forest blocks, current use. I think in the rural ten district in particular, you know, there's a lot, a lot of those lots are pretty large anyway. And it seemed to, you know, it just seemed to make a lot of sense based on the town plan and state law and those sorts of things as well.
I just had a couple of things to that as a former Planning Commission member. One of our early goals was to align better, align the zoning better with the town plan.
Excuse me, Tim, can you speak up just a little, please?
Sorry, I was told these microphones were magic and they could pick me up from anywhere. How's that too? I guess that's better. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. So aligning with the town plan was one of the goals. And also we did, we conducted a townwide survey of residents and property owners asking what was important to them when they considered life in Chester. And correct me if I'm wrong, Hugh, but I think that also went into the mix here with preserving the rural characters outside of town.
Right. Yep, that was definitely a theme in the survey results that we collected.
Yep, there you go, Preston.
I can also add that it's been, it, the state planning goal that's enshrined in the legislation is compact village and city centers surrounded by open countryside. And there's a constant push for us to be meeting that objective. And I know we're probably jumping into density-based a little bit early, but I'd just say that fixed minimum lot sizes does, the feeling is it causes more fragmentation of resource lands. And if we went to density-based, we could actually have, meet the state goal of less density, but still give landowners the flexibility to get a reasonable return on their land. I think it's best I can, the way I can phrase it.
Anything else on the maps?
I, you're attending the way this map is drawn, you would like to see Cummings Road upgraded to a two road.
Well, I guess I don't know about that, so.
You're talking about Cummings Road being this right here.
Yep.
That kind of finger is was there before we started, so I guess we didn't change it.
We didn't change it.
Think you should change it? Because that, right now, that's a class four road between the two ends, right from all of that.
I'm not really, I don't really have a point of view about whether that should be changed or not. I don't think the, yeah, absolutely.
This is Kathy Hasbrook. There's a substantial chunk off Cummings Road that belonged to a family and the patriarch died like eighteen months ago. And the pieces have been sold, more of the pieces have been sold recently. But they are occasionally it's somebody who's living full-time, but a lot of it's second homes. I don't know that that is, you know, says, yeah, you should connect them. When talking to the people at the different hearings for subdivisions and stuff, they were saying they liked walking over the glass floor road that they couldn't drive over to get into town. They thought that was very unique and fun. But I don't think anyone was looking to connect those any better than they're connected now.
Yeah, I think maybe the last thing I'll say is, as, as a planning commission, I didn't know that we had purview or authority to decide whether a road should be changed from class three to class four. So we didn't consider it. Okay.
I was always under the impression that little stretch of road that is class four was in such sad shape because of the river. I think something running down there that it would be almost impossible to try to change that to a class three road. And I, I don't believe there's anybody that's landlocked because of that small section that can't get to their property because there's access from the stone village or Route eleven on it also. So it doesn't seem like that would be a big concern as far as this zoning goes, as far as this picture goes, as far as where these boundaries are. There's no problem that I see that we're, we would try to fix by trying to make that a class three road. I mean, it is up to the Select Board as far as classifications of roads go and to upgrade them or downgrade them or to do all those different processes with it. But I've never heard of an issue with that road or anybody has ever confronted us or asked us anything about it. It's just been the way it's been.
The, the area that we're describing, the purple sort of shone stem, it doesn't look any different to what they, from the previous to where we are now. So it's not something we're discussing changing now. It's something that we've already changed, right?
This was, you know, from here to here, it's a no change, other than the lot size going from one acre to two acres.
And what we see there is what has already been approved.
Yes, this is, this is as adopted currently.
Do those, does that zone, the, the green zone that's a lot larger now, does that like represent more of the higher country in Chester? The, the mountainous areas, the, the areas that are higher in elevation?
Well, I'm going to ask Jason to take a shot at that. I mean, I've, I've looked at the A and R map, I've looked at the current use map. I don't think I've actually looked at sort of the elevation map to see how that plays in. Jason, do you happen to know that?
I think, I think there's a range. I mean, it doesn't, a lot of it is larger lots, a lot of it is higher elevational areas. But there are some connecting points that are, are lower in elevation. So I think it's a mix.
Thanks, Jason. I'm just curious because a lot of times when it comes to building and zoning, it's the topography of the land and the, and the construction of the land, whether it's ledge, whether there's rivers that really limits a lot of the building that would have, that would go on in those areas in the first place. I don't know if you could get to the frontage and the required space for septic and water separation and all that on relatively small lots, which is like, I can understand why the zoning would be higher as far as trying to keep it from being fragmented. That being said, when you do the density-based part of it, the few parts that might be conducive for having houses on the road frontage because there's still a, a road frontage requirement and stuff. You would be, be able to better utilize those few places that might exist to put up housing. And I thought part of the driver on some of this, besides getting large areas unfragmented also was being able to increase our housing stock in Chester. And it's great to do it as much as you can in the center. But there's a lot of land in the rest of the town where there's places that if it's conducive to put in, you know, some group of houses or some strip of houses or however you want to look at it and, and still have that density openness with it, that, that's probably a plus in my eyes when it comes to it. Because in the, you know, not everybody could afford to build or be towards the center of town. There's land out in different places where there's hopefully different options that you could do to, to put up a house. These days it's so expensive to build a house anyways. I don't think anybody's built one.
Yeah.
It's still part of the, part of the picture, it seems.
Yeah, so you know, while we're kind of going in that direction, let me just go ahead and kind of set the context for the density-based zoning and why we, we think it's a good approach. And we've already talked to some of the points, but basically one of the goals, you know, as you move away from the village center is to actually reduce density. So currently this is an R five, which means fixed lots, five acre minimum. We're proposing basically what we're calling rural ten density-based zoning, which basically equates to no more than one dwelling for ten acres. So in density-based zoning, you don't really have a minimum lot size requirement, but the requirement is when the subdivision is planned or when the land is developed, you cannot exceed a density of one dwelling for ten acres. So that effectively reduces the overall density by fifty percent over what we have today. But at the same time, because it's density-based, if there's parts of the land that are flat and suitable for development, then you can take advantage of those as long as you maintain open space elsewhere so that you don't kind of exceed that, that density number. So just to kind of put a pin in, you know, the, the high-level description. So this is ten-acre density-based zoning. And the yellow would become five-acre density-based zone. So I'll kind of stop for a minute and take questions or comments about, about that.
Making a mention of, I don't know how many of you remember, but we used to have something called the ten-acre loophole in Vermont where you didn't have to get a state-approved septic system if you had ten acres. And you kind of see that effect in these parts of town that are fairly flat. All these things are ten-acre lots, but they're, they're fragmented. I mean, you know, that, that's, that's the bad way of what can happen with a ten-acre lot.
So I have a hypothetical. As many of you know, I live on Papa Dungeon Road and there was a property owner that had a large tract of land and he would subdivide two-acre lots and put mobile homes on it, which I don't have a problem with, except I'm wondering if the changes proposed would exacerbate that issue where he's got, you know, two hundred acre lot. How many homes could he build on that under this particular proposal?
Well, I mean, at a, at, at the ninety thousand foot level, you can do the math on the two hundred acres and a, and a ten-acre density to figure out the actual number. I think the the size, the minimum size of the lot as it's, as it's sort of envisioned right now would be driven by things like frontage setbacks and then whatever amount of land you need to have well and septic. So if you could get all that done in an acre or two acres, then yeah, you could conceivably build out two-acre lots until you hit that, you know, density limit of one per, yeah, twenty. Yep.
So you would still have to subdivide the land
Yes.
into two-acre plots.
Yes, and, and, and kind of
Plot would be its own.
Right, and it would, it would, it would have to have its frontage, its setbacks and have all of its wastewater and, and well requirements met. And then I think the other thing, it's kind of important to just mention here because I know sometimes it can be, you know, let me envision, you know, you know, the worst case in a scenario like this and we go to density-based zoning. So you're still not going to be able to overbuild. And you have to basically agree that allowing the minimum lot size to be driven by requirements that are related to wastewater well, frontage and setbacks. And then I think, well, I guess what I'll say is the last line of defense is every subdivision goes through the DRB. So if something looks or smells, you know, undoable, then, then the DRB can, can get involved.
So I, I, I see a couple of potential issues with that. One is, you know, Preston just pointed out in the northeast part of the town, there's a whole bunch of ten-acre lots. So if you had two hundred acres and you divided it, so you had the frontage on the road and it went back, you know, a mile, but it's only twenty feet wide, you know, there's your two acres. I'm just making the numbers up, but you know, what's to prevent having a whole row of houses right next to each other meeting the setback requirements and all that stuff? Where you really are aiming for a more rural look where you don't have houses piled on top of each other?
Well, I mean, the only thing I can say to address that, because this came up in the past and it's, it was a good point. We've maintained the same frontage requirement. So you have that frontage requirement today.
Yeah, I thought I saw somewhere the frontage requirements were reduced.
Not, we, we, in this, in this district, we restored them to what they were.
So is that two hundred and fifty?
Two fifty, I think.
Which is pretty good chunk.
Yeah.
That seems like that would be the more limiting, limiting factor than most of the other things.
Yeah, if you take two fifty frontage and then a forty-foot front setback and a thirty-foot rear setback and then you stick a building envelope in there, you're probably no less than two acres at the end of the day.
Yeah, but I'm still, sorry, Ariana, I'm still thinking that.
Uh, yes, that could happen. I mean, and I suppose the, in addition to that, the, you know, a couple of things would have to come into place. People would want to live right near the road and the land near the road needs to be ideal for development. So there's, there are.
Yeah, I, again, I'm just trying to think of.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could I, could I add to that, Hugh?
Uh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Um, so, you know, just looking at the purpose statement, you know, again, you know, it talks a little bit about retaining rural character and wildlife habitat, et cetera. And there is a provision added that allows the DRB to look at character of development. And so, you know, if you're, if you're getting a proposal that just looks like it should be in a different part of town, you know, the DRB, I think, has some tools to, you know, to deal with it.
Yep. Passing it to Derek.
Here we go.
Pounce yourself, please.
Ah, I'm Derek Serso. I live in Smokesher, for those who need to know that. I truly share that same concern. I don't know what the math truly is. There is no minimum lot size. It could be shrunk down pretty hard with current engineering standards and abilities. They put in mound systems and all sorts of different stuff. And you can really potentially pack a lot of stuff in a very small space. Um, I did talk to the Planning Commission about this in general and they were very receptive. Unfortunately, the minimum lot size or the, the maximum density standard persisted. But yeah, I can see where you have two hundred acres, twenty houses, very tight spacing. Is that really where we want to go? Yes, I agree that the land will cause self-regulation to a point and so will the frontages and so on and whatnot. But we don't have a standard. And I'm really thinking there should be a minimum lot size tied to this somewhere. Whether it be one acres or two acres, I don't truly know. Um, I would also say that the illustration that is provided in the, the documents shows a ten-acre lot split into three, four acres lots and one something larger, no, it was a forty-acre lot split into three, four-acre lots and one twenty-eight acre lot, I believe. And that's nice. However, I wonder if we would feel the same if we did that same illustration, one forty-acre lot, three one-acre lots and one thirty-seven acre lot, how would we feel about that? So the illustration, while I understand it is strictly to demonstrate what we're talking about, uh, may cause a false impression, if you will. So as you go forward and consider this, I agree with almost everything with the exception of this maximum density standard. I think there's potential for exactly what you have talked about. And I don't think we'll like it if it should roll around.
Well, if I can respond, thank you, Derek. If I can respond, again, Papa Dungeon Road, there are a bunch of very small lots with mobile homes on it. And so I don't think the, the former conditions would have prevented that. I mean, they did clearly the, the I mean, they did clearly, the those lots were approved and the septic and well and all that on. So it it seems to me that um thinking about where we wanna be, housing is at a premium right now. We certainly need more housing, especially affordable housing. So I don't have anything against mobile homes, but I'm just thinking, how do we make this work for the desire of the town to have, you know, a a central area, the the center of town that's thriving, but also have the rural aspect of it? And then um not kind of put ourselves in a box as far as what gets popped up on small small lots that there's no minimum lot size as you're discussing. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm just asking a question.
Just the math on um frontage. I may not understand frontage properly, but if you've got twenty parcels that are on the road and you need two hundred and fifty feet for each parcel frontage, that that turns out to be a mile of five thousand feet of frontage. So I mean, if it's on two sides of the road, then you've got a half mile of road with ten houses on each side. But it's a fairly long run. It's this one limit that might have an impact on this.
Go ahead, Ariana, I know you've been waiting.
I'm doing math in my head. Using Lee's example, in the current scenario on that two hundred acre plot, would it be viable to create, I think our smallest minimum lot sizes, an eighth of an acre in the village or something? Would it be, could that landowner make twenty one eighth acre? What would stop them?
Septic requirements and frontage.
So.
And setbacks.
And you just said in conversation earlier that the frontage and the setbacks and the septic mean you couldn't actually probably build on less than two.
Yeah.
So is there a reason we don't consider two? Like, if you've just stated.
Yeah.
That if it, at all the tangential things lead to an implied minimum lot size. Then why not put it in?
Well, I mean, I don't think there's any harm if you be if you're careful with the minimum lot size. If you said uh it's um rural ten uh density based zoning and I want a a five acre minimum lot size, that sort of defeats the purpose of density based zoning. So you have to. Well, I mean, and so so I think the only thing that I so I guess my response is, I think that would probably be okay. The one case where it wouldn't be okay is when it's actually possible for a landowner to get a suitable building envelope with all his utilities and setbacks and everything on one acre. We just took that away from him, took it away. So, you know.
Have to be able to do that twice for us to have taken it away. He would have had to sit seated two houses on a two acre plot for us to have removed the responsibility, right?
Well, I'm not sure I'm following that, but but yes. In other words, if I could have created a subdivision with two one acre lots because the land would support it and somehow I could get my wastewater and well requirements met and somehow I could get my setbacks requet uh met, but then you said, sorry, it's a two acre minimum. Then.
Right, but you you're implying in your tone and what you're saying that that's not gonna happen anyway.
Well, but I'm not an expert on exactly what will drive the actual size of the minimum lot. I mean, it's easy to look at the building envelope, so I did that in the on the back of a napkin earlier. And basically, if you have a a relatively modest house, it has maybe a thirty by fifty foot foundation put footprint and you have a two hundred and fifty foot road frontage, a forty foot front setback and a thirty foot rear setback, you can't do anything on less than about an acre and a half. You just can't get the the structure in there.
Right.
So then so then, so then um once you add on septic, it's, yeah, so I guess, you know, probably an acre and a half would be the absolute minimum. And I think that's probably, you know, when you think of the eighty twenty rule about what the reality of it is, that's probably more like the twenty rule. Only twenty percent of the time would an acre and a half work. You're probably gonna be looking at two or three acres.
Right. So I think.
Practically speaking, in my opinion, but I'm not, I'm not a surveyor and I'm not a septic system designer and I'm not a builder.
But I agree, everything you're saying, I agree with. I lived on a two acre lot previously where my septic was over on somebody else's property by accident and my driveway cut across my neighbor's yard.
Yeah, so that's not ideal. Right.
So then the other question I have, and I don't need to derail us for too long, but it's, I haven't heard it answered. If I own twenty acres and I carve out two beautiful three acre lots on the front of it and I keep my house in the back and we're good and I sell those. Ten years from now, I'm long gone, somebody's living in my house with a big acreage and this person sells their house to someone else.
Yeah.
Nothing about these considerations remains. I'm no longer the property owner holding my twenty acres because it uh fulfills the requirement of that three acre lot. So now what stops me as the person who owns the remaining seventeen from saying, well, now I can subdivide into two five acre lots?
Because you'd have to go to the DRB and get a subdivision permit and they wouldn't give it to you.
But I got it the first time, so the homeowner that.
Yeah, but the permit runs with the land, not with the person. Doesn't have anything to do with you. Yeah.
That helps. That helps. Thank you.
Yep.
Two house sites along the road, you couldn't develop the other.
The rest of it.
It couldn't be developed.
No, I'm just like the the statement, Kathy, the permit goes with the land is very helpful because my concern was about future homeowners ten years from now thrilling because they can get on a one and a half acre lot and then discovering they can do something else or getting a property that has fifty acres and thinking, I got fifty acres, I can build a house for my kids. And then realizing all fifty acres are held accountable to the other small plots on.
Right.
And I guess my bigger question that I'll have to sleep on is, as the original landowner who subdivided, the permit goes with the land.
Yeah.
So whoever that, it's just hard, I gotta, I gotta figure out how.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Yep.
It feels like we're creating obligations for future homeowners.
We are.
We're deciding what is available to them and it feels like we're doing it with a heavier consideration for current potential homeowners. And that that's all I'm trying to weigh in my head. Are we doing something that's in service to the guy who shows up tomorrow to develop? But is not necessarily in service to the people who show up ten years from now. That's, I I don't know, I'm trying to wrap my head up.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'll say to that is um I don't think that dilemma you're describing has anything to do with this particular scenario. It's land use management at large. Anytime somebody does something to a piece of land and permits it a certain way, that decision sticks with the land regardless of who takes the land going forward, so.
In any of these regulations that we're considering today, they could be changed in the future. I mean, even though it might be part of a a deed or a title or whatever in a in a development that happened now, ten fifteen years from now, if somebody decided, uh, well, we're gonna change that, they could make that all go away. If that, I mean, not that they would, but.
Yeah.
That possibility is always still there. No matter what we do for rules and regulations, they're they're allowed to be changed and.
I think that's a good point, so if it becomes a problem at some point down the road, then the planning commission and the DRB can suggest making changes and if you go through another hearing.
I respect that. I feel like I've gotten to a certain age where removing boundaries and then putting them back is far more difficult than shifting boundaries and then removing. So there's just a little bit of that logic that I think about with the we don't know what happens with minimum, we do know what we think happens with minimum lot size, so it's all theoretical. If we were to put in something where it's, we know it's the it's the frontage, it's the setback, it's the septic, we do also have the ability in a year or two to go, you know, we had six developers come and then they all left because we didn't do this, then we would make changes. Is there a problem we're trying to solve? Are there developers who are choosing or property owners or landowners who are coming to Preston and saying, I wanna subdivide, but you won't let me? I wanna do this with my land, but the current zoning is keeping me from taking advantage of my land ownership.
Um, no, no, uh, it it we're not. The impetus behind this isn't because I have a list of people that have, you know, found that the current system doesn't work for them. We do think it would be a better land use with less fragmentation, but no, I don't, I don't think that's the driver behind it.
Was there ever more robust regulation? Or have we, have we overregulated zoning and believed that at any point in the last twenty five years? The folks that I think have lived here a while?
I don't think I can answer that.
It's truly hard to remember all the facts and time destroys your memory, as we all know. Um, the neck of the woods in the northwest of Chester used to be the Conservation Residential District. Um, it came into being in the seventies. I have this tickle in my memory that says that at one point it was ten ten acre lots up there. I have no idea if that's accurate or just my imagination.
There's not so great challenge fifteen years ago, like I'm still doing, but there's on.
Well, there was a need to make that. There the what drove the Conservation Residential District back then was an individual who wanted to develop a plot of land, a very nice flat field. Um, the intent was to put in a mobile home park. The residents of the Smokesher Valley, which is what we're talking about, um, did not like that idea. They all got together, um, they did two things. Um, they, number one, paid the developer not to do it um for some fairly large cash. And then they wrote a covenant that all those individuals uh who paid essentially signed and agreed to that there would be certain restrictions and I cannot remember precisely what those were. But there was a real serious uh desire to maintain the rural nature of that property in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Here we go. I I think I might have an answer to your question or at least an analogy. Uh, we all know that regulations tend to always get more strict, not less. However, even in town here, uh, we did in the Village Green and Village Center actually remove, relax some of the rules, make the lots smaller, make the setbacks less, have less things go before the DRB. So I mean, it is, it does happen. Um, and it's not impossible to roll back rules, but there needs to be a public consensus that, you know, a public will to do it.
I'm not sure. Step off it, I'm just curious about opinion. Having a minimum lot size or not having a minimum lot size and what that could lead to, because no minimum, if they can. We're just going back, it's it's not because the existing rules mean it has to be this size, but if it's gonna, we assume that, then why not?
So in terms of minimum lot size, I've been wandering around town lately. Um, and unfortunately, I'm noticing a lot of properties that while we cannot reg- regulate aesthetics, um, we have a lot of properties that are, I'm getting a little junky. It's like, I, you know, and I don't mean to criticize people, this is what they do and they have to live in their own house. I would say, though, as you have smaller lot sizes, that condenses that problem. Um, it makes it possibly greater amongst neighbors. I would say that a larger lot size, three acres out there, rural people like to spread out their their elbows and they have their messes. Um, I'm thinking a minimum lot size might help alleviate those kind of potential problems. Um, and it's, I I realize it's distasteful that we should perhaps talk about how people live. Um, but I would like to see them get the room that they need to live in the manner that they wish.
So I don't know if I did the the math right. I have a drawing program on my computer and I've been putting a thirty by fifty building on a lot with a thirty foot setback in the rear, thirty foot on both sides and forty foot in the front and it's a quarter of an acre.
Two hundred and fifty foot frontage? It's point six, point six acres, I think.
Yeah, so.
But that doesn't lea-, you know, and so I had this discussion with Preston because I was, we were going through this example and it's like, that's interesting. But nobody is gonna wanna building envelope that goes around the outline of their foundation. So they will do something to create more wiggle room. And so even if the absolute minimum, you know, from a building envelope point of view would be point six, I took that number and said, yeah, nobody's gonna do that. So it's gonna be more like an acre or an acre and a half because somebody's gonna wanna build a shed or a garage or put a deck on or do something. And 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 I think the other thing is, there are many people that would say, I don't want my house forty feet from the road, I want my house seventy feet from the road. So, you know, if it's a dirt road and you're thirty feet from the forty feet from the road, you're pretty close.
Does that take into account water and septic also?
No.
I'm just looking at the at the building plot on a piece of property.
Yep.
So I I have no idea what the, I mean, my thinking is that if you have the well in one corner and the septic in the opposite corner, it might be fine if you park, but I don't know.
There's some, yeah, there's some huge restrictions on septic systems as far as property lines go also because you can't affect your neighbor.
Right.
So you gotta be quite a a pretty, and I don't know the exact numbers, but they're a lot bigger than the setbacks that we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So realistically, I think you're still back to the picture that it would be acre and a half to close to two acres before you, if the right conditions happen to be there, that everything fell into place, I still think you're gonna be up there like you were saying about.
Yeah, and I agree. I'm I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
What what it would look like. So if you had two hundred and fifty feet across the front, forty in the back, or you know, forty in the front, thirty in the back, you're still at about a half an acre. I mean, it will, yeah, about a half an acre. And then you have to have your septic and a well and all that stuff. So two acres is probably not unreasonable for that, but could you do it otherwise? I don't know.
What do you mean, could you do it otherwise?
Well, I mean, it, I don't know enough about the regulations for distance separating.
Oh, right.
Supply from the septic.
Yeah.
And whether you're.
Have enough land for the leach fields and all of that stuff, yeah.
Couple cents from my mind here, because I've been thinking about this a long time. I know a lot of people are processing this now, this density thing and it's natural to think about the what ifs and the worst case scenarios and I think it's important to do that. I wanna, my perspective here is, if if somebody could build a house on a one acre lot in rural part of town and that made it affordable for them to do that, great, let's let's let them do it because the rest of that land now becomes in perpetuity, for our purposes tonight, becomes left alone. So this, to me, this uh density development limitation makes a lot of sense. I'm an amateur naturalist, I guess I would call it, and preserving the the rural nature of our town is really important for a lot of reasons. It was also something that was mentioned as a key to quality of life in Chester by a very large percentage, I think over seventy percent of the respondents to a survey that we did. So, uh, while I understand, you know, let's think about worst case, could you put a house in a half acre lot? Probably not because of septic and, and water, but if you could do it on a one acre lot and there were two of those side by side. I think that's a great thing, personally. And I don't think there are gonna be very many places where that can happen. That's my two cents.
I have one more question. This perpetuity thing is nice and I understand that we will be putting. The proper documentation in the deeds and so on and so forth, but all that can be changed. This is, we said tonight, or you said tonight, the regulations are good until the next group comes along and says, well, they're not so good. So when you say that that land will be preserved in perpetuity, I don't see a guarantee of that happening.
Well, of course it could be changed, Derek, but it takes this process to do it, this process has been going on for. Five years now?
I do understand that, but. When you start out easy, it's impossible, or it's not impossible, but it's hard to get more strict. It's easier to start strict and then release the rules.
Which I think I've heard. So the thing is, when you talk about rural character, people, you have a rural houses on a road and you can't see the rural character. Where is the rural character?
Up on the hill, behind the, you can't see them.
You don't see them. You know, that's, it's a rural character deficiency. Um, I, I have some other questions, if you wanna get off this.
Are we moving off of density based onto something else? Okay, well, before we do that, let's make sure, are we all done with whatever questions people might have about. The proposal for the two density based zones.
About Trebo Road, I mean.
Is your name, sir?
Yeah, Brian Mosher. Just you referenced that when, that little purple spot going up and you said one oh three, but I think that also encompasses Trebo Road. And I was wondering why you're running that, um, what is it, residential two? Instead of five up Trebo Road, it's kind of a. I don't know, my first thought is, that's a pretty scary intersection right at the bottom of Trebo Road, so. The less cars, the better, and if you put more density up that road. Some people are gonna start taking the shortcut to Springfield. You know, it's a rural area, it's a beautiful road, so, I don't know, I was just curious.
Yeah, Jason, I don't know, do you have any recollections or comments about, I think what I can recall just generally was. We were sort of looking at. The different types of lots that were in that part of one oh three and going up Trebo Road. And they, we kind of viewed it as more of a, more of a residential. Feel to it, and that may be why we flipped that from, you know, yellow to purple, but do you, do you have a recollection about that at all, or? I don't know, Preston, do you?
I, I have a little recollection of it, I think, yeah, we were looking at, um, again, sort of coming out of the village where. Basically, where could housing go, right? Um, and there were. I recall, you know, some smaller lots up in there, and so we, we, you know, I think that's how we ended up there.
Yeah.
You know, chasing the smaller existing lots to some extent. Um, I hear the point about the, the bad intersection, that's valid, but, um.
Yeah.
That's what we were thinking about originally.
Yeah.
So, um. The first lots behind Coppings on Trebo. Um, was a big field and they subdivided it into, I think, twenty-six parcels. They're sitting there subdivided, and then since nobody bought anything, they turned it over to solar field. But if you see the detail of that area, it's, there's twenty-six residential lots there potentially. And I think the town knows that that's a lousy intersection, um, and. They've thought about, um, putting a road down to one oh three. Through, through that subdivided field and past the, the substation. Um, and they've also, I think, looked at the parcel on the corner that I used to own. Cause just a little bit further down the road, there's a much better line of sight. And, and one of the four driveways that was on that parcel goes out onto one oh three there and, and I think people use that in the summer a lot. So, um. That's, I, that's part of what comes to mind with, um, Trebo anyway.
Relocating the road was a condition of the subsidy.
Yeah.
It never solved a lot, so the road never helped.
Right.
Where the solar field is.
Where the, where the solar field is, there's a driveway that came down just this side of the substation, this south substation.
Okay, anything else, or are we good on that, least part of the discussion topic? And Peter, before we go on to your question, I want to take a few minutes just to get through. The other items that are in this executive summary, because that'll wrap up what I have to communicate to you folks about what's. The, you know, largely in the bylaws. And then after that, we can certainly go in, on other topics or into the details of the document, so. Um, the next thing that we added to the bylaws was, um, some language around tiny houses, so. They're a reality, they're probably not going away, we don't have any, we did not have any language in our bylaws that would sort of. Frame, uh, tiny houses in terms of, uh, what they are and how they fit. So, uh, we added some language to define tiny houses, what they look like and how to know that it is one. So that's in there. Sort of. In conjunction or as a compatible theme, we added a section around cottage courts. Not that a cottage court has to be made up of tiny houses, but the idea is, you know, with this pressure. To figure out how to create more housing that's, you know, not terribly expensive. This notion, notion of a cottage court was added so that we would. Be able to facilitate, you know, a community of dwellings that are. Could be tiny houses, could be something even a little smaller than what we, you would consider a typical single family dwelling starter home. So, um, so we created the definitions in the language for that. Um, but I think it's important, um, to also say that based on some feedback we got. Um, at the previous public hearing, cottage courts would not be. Allowed in the Village Green, in the open space district, in either of the rural districts or in the. Um, kind of the Conservation District, which is the Forest District, but there aren't any dwellings there.
So that was just cottage courts, you said that wouldn't be allowed?
Yeah, so when we, originally when we framed out cottage courts, we kind of said, yeah, put them everywhere, or allow them to go everywhere. Um, but we got some feedback that I think made sense, that really suggests that, um. Cottage courts are small, uh, dwellings, they're highly densely packed, and once you get into a rural area. The only way to make that work would be to think about shared well and shared septic, and we just decided. That's not really. You know, as much as it's physically doable, it's not really practically doable. And there isn't really a, a great precedent for, um, people coexisting happily. On shared septic and well, and I think if Jeff were here, he would say, and oh, by the way, once you get over a certain number. Then the state gets involved and then the municipality has to, you know, kind of own it. So for all of those reasons, we took cottage courts out of the areas that largely aren't served by water and sewer utilities, so that was a change. And then lastly, these last two ones, we talked about the mixed use districts a little bit, we split them between village and rural. Largely because, um. The, the uses, uh, just weren't compatible if we took mixed use. And, um. Tried to make appropriate uses for the different parts of town, all in one zoning district, um. It just, it just wasn't working, um, so we split those so that we could get the uses, um, configured more appropriately. And then I think we've already sort of talked about, uh, residential two, which is sort of the R forty replacement. It's expansion up Route one oh three and on Route ten. It's changed from one to two acres. Um, and then, of course, we took some uses out of that residential two, um, zone as well. So some of the examples that came out because we didn't feel they were really completely compatible, appropriate for a residential area was. Animal hospital, animal kennel, commercial storage unit, extraction operations, so, so you can just see by. The sorts of things we pulled out. Uh, don't really fit, um, in what we would consider a residential two acre zoning district, so. Uh, at ninety thousand feet or at the high level, that's all I have to share. Uh, unless, you know, we want to go into the document, or I know Peter has some questions, I'm happy to go wherever. The select board wants to go in terms of further discussion.
So you, you're going to cite a state law.
Pete, Pete, where, excuse me, Peter, where are you?
Um, seven point one three.
One twenty-three of the doc.
So you, you can, uh, you cite a state document that says. In order to be a party, a group to be a party. It takes ten and then you're saying the town of Chester should make it four. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at article and page, can you cite that for me, please? Seven, seven. Article one two. Article seven. Article seven page.
Hold on, Pete. Interested persons?
Yeah. I believe, Jason, that the state law was changed, and so this just simply reflects the change in state law.
That's right, yep.
But while the state law that comes up still says ten, when is it supposed to go into effect?
So I'm trying to remember if this was the Home Act from two years ago, or whether this was Act one eighty-one this year, I, uh. I think it went into effect July first of this year.
I believe it was this year's change. There was certainly no intent that Chester's rules would be more strict than state rules. It's just simply to match state rules, and in fact. I don't even know if we could. Say it takes twenty when state law says ten, personally.
No, the, honestly, the backstory from the legislature, the, or the intent is that, um. They feel too frequently housing projects get appealed, so they're making it harder to appeal. That's really why this change happened at the state level, and this change in your bylaws is just to reflect what happened in Act one eighty-one, I believe is where that. Place.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else have any other questions?
Yep. Article three point twenty-two actually called out that there's a maximum parking space size. Going around and measuring anybody you're talking to today now? Article three.
Article three, page fourteen, fourteen, thank you.
I, I'll say again, Jason. I think this is the legislature wanting. I mean, they literally don't want parking lots to be too big, they're trying to reduce area parking lots, and I think we're. Following what. They have said.
That's correct.
It's. It's fascinating what the legislature is doing. For me, it's like whiplash, because it used to be we wanted to have parking for the biggest events that could happen all year, so. The day before Christmas is the parking you're supposed to have, and now they're. Really looking very negatively at parking, they're saying that, uh, causes a lot of stormwater problems, it's an unwise use of space. Uh, we're trying to trend away from a car-based society, on and on and on, so yeah, they, they basically said they don't want towns to. Prescribe bigger parking spaces.
Take up too much room. I had a quick question on, uh, you had cottage courts, you have tiny houses and trailer parks. What are, what is the bit, the difference between like a trailer park or a cottage court? Is it just, is it specified in size, or is it?
Peter knows a lot about this subject. So I will keep it fairly succinct and he can expand if he wants to. Um, trailers and trailer parks are very specifically defined by HUD. You know, Housing and Urban Development Federal Agency, because they fund it. And so. And there are going to be trailer parks around, but. Tiny home parks are just at different, use smaller and different dimensions than what HUD defines, and so. That's why we wanted to have the flexibility to, um. You know, we can do traditional trailer parks, which I don't think Chester has any of, or we can do unconventional, kind of, you know, unconventional ones.
HUD says that a trailer, minimum size of a trailer is equal. So when you get into a tiny house, which you're talking four hundred square feet, they're much smaller. So therefore you say, well, we want to have a trailer park, they're totally different sizes.
But they, my thought is that they require the same type of resources, they need water, they need sewer. Their housing and their affordable housing, and yet we're distinguishing them to be. They're not all allowed in the same areas, I, I assume, I mean, wherever a cottage court can go. Trailer park doesn't necessarily, it isn't necessarily allowed to go in that same area, is that true?
I think that is true, I think when I look at the, the mobile home park, it's probably more. A cottage court. It is, it's, there's specific square footage you have to have per trailer.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So if you have a tiny house that's half as long as that, would you use the same restrictions? If more, more tiny homes in the same.
In the same space, but they still require basically the same thing besides.
We're gonna have water and sewer.
Yeah. It, it just seems like it's being discriminatory against trailer parks, and I've, and I've heard it before in other conversations where it's. I'm all for this, like, this is okay, but, and then the word trailer park comes in and something. It's.
Well.
In a time when. We have a shortage of, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of houses in Vermont. I don't like to see things get limited, unless there's a good reason for it, that unless there's something that's concrete and why that should be. Uh, treated different than something that's relatively the same, maybe the size is a little different.
You can still have a trailer, someone could still apply for a trailer park.
But in some areas you can't, but you can have a cottage court but not a trailer park.
Well, certainly you should say you should be able to have a trailer park anywhere in this park. And you, maybe you make the exception of Village Green.
Didn't the cottage court include trailers? And say a cottage court could be comprised of tiny homes or trailer, or a wall?
Uh, it wasn't trailers, it, well, it was.
Oh, it was RVs, it was not.
It wasn't, um, manufactured homes or whatever they're calling them, I'm trying to, I'm trying to surface the, the part of the bylaw that tells where. Mobile home parks can go.
Well, the big thing is, you're, it's twelve, twelve thousand feet, feet per mobile district.
Yeah.
So that really starts sucking up a lot of territory, that's, uh, if you're following, I think we pull down HUD guidelines.
And, and, and I still think, uh, the land itself is gonna limit a lot of what we're talking about when it comes to putting a home anywhere. But once you start talking water and sewer and setbacks and replacement fields and distance from property lines and distance from neighbors. You could dream about all kinds of things that you would like to see happen, but, uh, we're extremely limited. By the land and what goes on. Now, just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jason, you provide. Yeah, Jason, you provide, you did a table of what's allowed in each district and we can't put our hands on it.
Okay.
If you could, I mean, my recollection is we we left mobile home parks alone, but then we added tiny home parks. And so there may be an inequity. I don't know.
Three point one six. The section, article three, page nine, which is where we were. Uh, says mobile home parks are allowed as a conditional use in R M U with the edits in R M U Res two and Rule five.
That's, that's right. I just found it. That's right.
Are only available where there's separate sewer, or sewer.
So yeah, I think probably what Preston's saying is is accurate. When you contemplated cottage courts and originally we had them everywhere and then we took them out of places that didn't have utilities. We never did reconcile back to sort of, why isn't a cottage court like a mobile home park and and check and do kind of a cross check on that. So probably what's in for mobile home park is unchanged from previously. Just whatever, whatever it was. There's a breaking print. I have April, start being a print back four. That's something I want to know.
We've got that now or whether it's a part of the discussion.
Right, yeah, it's what it does is is they reconcile. So you have the districts at the top and then all the, so it's like, you have a, see, mobile home park is here. You know, it's allowed and this here, here it's a conditional use. Yeah.
I just, I just.
Well, we're gonna be, it's gonna be an agenda item as we come to it anyways, where we're gonna have a little further discussion on whether we take this further or what happens. So.
Would be nice to have that taken.
Yeah, the tiny house at this point, it was called community is allowed, less.
So while we have the Planning Commission here and Preston also, any questions or other concerns or any other comments from the public that they would like to voice in this part of the hearing? Rob, just my dead phone.
I'm kind of looking forward to having a podium, so. Maybe someone can hold the microphone. I prefer to stand up.
You're up here, I guess. Just have to be generally around.
Yeah.
Okay. You can read the letter or I would like to read it aloud. So that's into the into the record and also submit it for the record. Um, I, I'm Amy Mosher. I live in the, what is the R one twenty currently? And I appreciate the select board inviting the public to share their thoughts and concerns this evening. If you wouldn't mind, I'm going to read the letter. So if you could just give me your attention, I appreciate it. Thank you. So thank you for having us here to share our thoughts about the proposed bylaws this evening. I was relieved to see the planning commission took cottage courts out of the R one twenty, which is proposed to be the R U R five and the R U R ten. Cottage courts are best suited in areas with town water and sewer. Key New Hampshire recently approved a cottage court ordinance, but made sure to cite them only in areas served, served by town water and sewer. Um, I believe cottage court is still in the the R two, which is the purple. And I'm not sure that that's served by town water and sewer. Um, it would be beneficial if setbacks also were not reduced in the rural areas. Setbacks are a part of what gives landowners peace of mind, knowing they're not going to be encroached upon. I would like to see the setback distances maintained as they were in the rural districts. After reading the proposed revisions several times, I did not notice that minimum lot size requirements had a black line through them until a week ago because it was crossed out with black and I was, I was looking for all the red in the proposed bylaws. So for me, it's very concerning that minimum lot size requirements are proposed to be eliminated in the R U R, which was the one twenty and the and the R U R ten, which is the residential conservation or conservation residential. If we take a minute and refer to the zoning map, which is so nicely put up there and look at the expansive area of the R U R five and ten, which is the light green and the yellow. We can see we're talking about roughly nine tenths or ninety percent of the town. If Chester covers fifty-five square miles, then we're talking about a big change that would impact roughly forty-nine point five square miles of the town. By taking away the minimum lot size requirement in the R U R five and the R U R ten, the town would be inviting suburban development into these sensitive rural areas. How does it make sense for the R U R five, previously the one twenty and the R U R ten, previously the conservation residential which is compromising ninety percent of Chester to be the only two districts in the town where minimum lot size would not, no longer be required? So when I did the math, like you, um, for the R U R five, um, I did the hundred and fifty foot because across the front and I did a hundred feet back. And I cited the home, the twenty foot or the twenty percent coverage where it should be. And I was able to determine that third acre lots would be allowed there. So if a person owns thirty acres, they could develop five homes on two acres, each on point one three or point three acres of land, as long as they maintained a six home on a minimum of five acres. If someone owns sixty acres in the R five, previously the one twenty, they could build eleven homes on third acre lots, covering four acres right next to the road. As long as eleven homes met the hundred and fifty foot frontage and minimum side setbacks, leaving room for one more home on the largest parcel. This move to strike through minimum lot size would pretty much be anything goes, do what you want, back road suburbia with strip development mixed in. Never knowing who is going to do what next to you, because there would be no conditional use permit review required to let neighbors know in advance. After the homes are built, we have more trips per day on narrow town highways, increased maintenance of the roads, more mud season, truck loads of gravel, and the rural character has been completely altered and does not look or feel rural anymore. And there would be no going back. What would be done would already be done. There would be no impact fees to help cover the cost to the town if this is allowed. And I was curious, have other Vermont towns eliminated, eliminated minimum lot sizes in the rural districts? If yes, I would be curious to know which towns. The place to create affordable workforce housing is where there's town water and sewer. This is suppo, is this is supported by the Vermont Home Act forty-seven, which was just passed in two thousand twenty-three. The Home Act encourages affordable housing and density in residential areas, districts and areas of the town served by water and sewer. Town water and sewer. The Vermont Home Act does not encourage density zoning or affordable housing in rural areas. It makes it very specific to note that, but it's for area served by town water and sewer. After reading the planning commission minutes and agenda packets back to January during the last week, I found a letter from Jason Rasmussen, who's here with us this evening. Hi, Jason. Um, he's with the Regional Planning Council and it was dated January second and it was sent to the town manager, the zoning administrator and the planning commission. In the letter, Mr. Rasmussen states, quote, "Alternative, in rural districts, I like eliminating a minimum lot size and replacing it with a unit acre density standard. It allows for flexibility, but it can also be an administrative headache." On January fifth, three days later, the planning commission packet included a working draft of the bylaws with minimum lot size crossed out in both the R one twenty and the conservation residential districts. The planning commission seems to believe the density zoning in rural districts is a good idea because it could leave more open space. That all sounds nice, but it's important to remember these rural districts are prone to flooding as the rivers and streams run alongside many of the unpaved town roads and highways. Just last year, Chester suffered two flooding events in July and December. And we live on Jewett Road and our road washed out twice completely. So this is just something to really consider when we're thinking about, you know, putting more houses back on the dirt roads or allowing allowing more houses to go in. Encouraging. Eliminating minimum lot sizes in the rural districts would make land easier to develop and at the same time make development harder to regulate. This approach of density zoning in the rural areas is not consistent with the Chester town plan. And it is not in conformance with the Vermont Home Act forty-seven because the act specifically encourages increasing density in areas served by town water and town sewer. The rural areas are not served by town water or sewer. So in conclusion tonight, I ask the Chester Select Board to please slow down. Please carefully think through and understand how eliminating, eliminating the minimum lot size requirements across ninety percent of the town would impact the scenic and rural character. Please take the time to envision the big picture and consider the number of undue adverse impacts that would occur if minimum lot size requirements were eliminated. I asked the Select Board to be thoughtful and open to conversation. We live in a state and a community that wants to preserve the rural areas now and into the future. I asked the Select Board to send these bylaws, proposed bylaws back to the planning commission and ask them to maintain minimum lot size requirements, maintain healthy building setbacks in the rural areas. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Jason, you have your hand up or is that an accident?
No, I, I guess I did. I'd like to respond a little bit if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Amy. The, you know, good, good comments. And, you know, I think it's, as far as I'm concerned, I'm always open to, we've had the conversation at the planning commission level about keeping a minimum lot size or not. I did want to just point out for clarity's sake that, you know, this change, so looking at the, what, what we're proposing is the R U R, the Rural Five District. We're, we are decreasing density, not increasing it. So today you could have six acres, a six acre lot to theoretically subdivide. You could create two, three acre lots. If this change goes through, you'd need a ten acre lot to create two lots. Um, that second lot, the size of which could change, but so I just want to clarify your, you know, today two lots, two houses on six acres, tomorrow, two lots, two houses, two buildings on ten acres. So just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Jason.
Can I, can I ask a question? So I don't expect anybody to know the answer to this, but has anyone done the calculation on how many six acre lots there are or three acre lots there are or what could happen if if this change were made or we went with, stayed with the three acre lot size? Is that like a thousand lots, thousand homes or I, I, and again, I'm not expecting you to know the answer, but the question is, has anybody thought about what the potential could be?
Well, I think, so the answer is no, we haven't thought about, done the math on the existing lots to see what that would look like. And part of the reason is I believe because we're trying to basically reduce density, the alternative to a density based approach is to start changing minimum lot size in the green and the yellow, instead of it being five, it could go to maybe eighteen. And instead of being three, it could go to ten. Because that's the only way to reduce density, practically speaking, and achieve some of these other goals that are related to connectivity. So generally speaking, when Vermont says large lot zoning, they do not mean three acres and they do not mean five acres. They mean fifty acres or thirty acres or some number that's a lot bigger than what we currently have. So we probably didn't really consider leaving um, the rural zones at three and five. It's too small.
Thank you.
Yep. If there are lots that are three acres or six acres that are on the map now, is there a legacy use for them or do they change or do they maintain their status? Like I got six acres, I could do what I, you know, do it to two threes or, or how does that work?
Well, um, you could probably answer that, but yeah, you know, because the people.
We'll just, we'll just deal with that. I, I think what your question is, is that if somebody has a six acre parcel now, are they grandfathered even though we make this change? The answer is no. So if we make this change, then if someone came in with a six acre parcel and said, I want to divide into two parcels, let's say you can't because the density is now, you know, five acres. Yeah. The, however, lots that have already been created, they're, they're preserved, but the, but that's, that would be the correct answer. Yes.
I, I must be missing something. Because the density based, whatever the phrase is, sounds great. We don't lose that if it's all those things with a minimum lot size. You still have, it's a twenty acre lot. He's got fifteen acres in back. There's a couple of plots in front. I'm not saying throw the baby out with the bathwater. I, I really appreciate where you guys have gone with this and I appreciate the concept that you're actually reducing density by increasing the quantity of land that must exist undeveloped. All I'm saying is what happens if you apply a minimum number to all of that same thing? Because I've heard nothing tonight that would indicate that you're throwing out your whole density plan by saying it's a two acre or a three acre minimum.
Yes.
And all these other.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on.
I just want to make sure I missed something.
Yeah, I, I would say we had these discussions and we're generally on that same page. The reason it came to the Select Board without a minimum lot size with density based zoning is because as a starting point, it's a little bit, we felt like it was an additional regulation that wasn't really required because density based zoning largely manages it because of setbacks, frontage and, and, you know, wastewater requirements. If the Select Board feels like we need another layer of protection and we want to put a minimum lot size in conjunction with density based zoning, I think that's a decision you guys get to make. Um, if you said, we don't like density based zoning at all, go back and, and drum up another proposal that doesn't include density based zoning, then we could do that also, but it would look much different than R five and R one twenty.
Speaking as an individual, as on this one court, I would not, I'm much more a fan of the density based zoning, but with a graduated step. So the idea of going to eighteen and fifteen acre lots and making minimum sizes at twenty. I would hate to see us even contemplate that. So I, I don't know that that's even been brought up.
I guess one thing that would make me more comfortable is to understand the regulations around water and septic for these rural districts and what the setbacks are or distances, because I don't know, I don't mean to put more work on you. If you could send me a link and say, here, go look this up, I'm happy to do that, but. But if I had that information that's affirmed in my mind that it's going to be a minimum of two acres regardless of what you do.
Yeah.
Because of those setbacks and the requirements for septic and water, that would make me more comfortable.
That information, I think, is relative.
Well, you're not required to have your well and your setback on your property. That's, and that's not in this already proposed area.
So that's also a concern.
Right.
Because if you have a lot that doesn't have your water and sewer on it and your neighbor comes in and wants to do something where your water supply and sewer, the septic system is, then that could be an issue.
Well, I.
I think we'd rely on the DRB to make sure that doesn't happen going forward.
I thought. Fourth lot, so now their inner row lot, farthest to the, farthest to the west is undeveloped. The next two lots had a house and the fourth lot was the bigger house lot because of the septic requirements. So you have two existing houses. Lot number four, at the time it can develop, has the right of way to dig all the way across everybody else's lot to get the lot four to put the septic. And that is a legal state system.
Well, let's, how about we, if we have any more questions from the Planning Commission? Because we're going to be having this discussion later on in the meeting.
Right.
And if there's more things, more information that we need to make our decision, we could task somebody to get that information for us. The decision doesn't have to happen tonight if we need more information to go forward with this. I think it's going to take a little bit of extra work on our end to answer some of these questions that we have to get it a little more clear in our minds how this works. I think they've done a good presentation as far as explaining something that's not that easy to understand when you talk about density zoning, but it does accomplish more, I think, than just a regular zoning for that specific density requirement where the density is actually greater because of this than it would be when it's less. But while we're here, while we have them here, if there's any more comments from the public, will we have any more direct questions or concerns from the board to the Planning Commission? Now would be the time, if not, we're going to probably move on.
The other thing you can do, Arnie, is not close this here.
Yeah.
Just recess this hearing to your next meeting. Planning Commission can do some research, get some answers based on some of your questions and you continue your hearing at your next meeting. That would kind of almost be the more appropriate thing to do if the board wants to move forward that way.
I still would like to have it, we could re, okay, we could recess that now and still have that conversation.
Well, that agenda item is to adopt it. So if you're going to be asked. Well, that's what your public hearing is for, is to discuss and share your opinions with the Planning Commission and send them, that's what the public hearing is about.
So I would make a motion for this, wait a second. I would like to say that I really appreciate the usage, the change in usage, and there's a lot of things in this besides density that have really stepped forward and I really appreciate that aspect of it. You know, the density is the wild card. There's a lot of hard work in here and I think you guys did a really good job on all that and that I really appreciate. You shouldn't go from here saying that, you know, that it's a negative thing because you did really well on a lot of the things it's just the density based zoning is about. So with this, I would make a motion to.
Recess.
Recede the meeting until our next, the public meeting until the next.
Select Board meeting?
Yeah, we have to do that.
Which you're going to be set, so just say the next.
To the future.
Yeah, it's only had to do a date certain.
You do have to recess to a date certain.
Unless you want to re-advertise.
Unless you want to re-advertise.
Okay, so you're gone next meeting, so we're the second meeting.
So is your next Select Board meeting the 15th or are you going to do a special meeting on the 9th? Or you can do it on the regular date and I just won't be here. You're welcome to meet without me.
Okay, so we recess till the 15th.
What's the consensus? Everybody okay with that?
Would be the 16th.
It would be the.
Wednesday is the 16th.
The 16th. If you're good to have only one Select Board meeting in October, then it would be the 16th.
Unless you want to meet in the beginning of October.
If you want to meet the, for your regular meeting, the first Wednesday, you're welcome to, I will not be here, but that's okay. You can meet with that.
It's okay, I mean, it's the Planning Commission.
You can meet on the night.
The other thing is just while we're talking schedules, I won't be able to participate in anything being voted a second.
So we'll make it the middle of October.
I can't make the 9th.
You can't make the 9th.
So just go the 15th, you don't have a ton on your agenda for the 15th anyway. 16, sorry, 16. You don't have a lot on your agenda already, so we can block it for this.
The motion is to reset the public, recess the public hearing until the 16th.
Okay.
2024.
Here's, here's the motion, Ariana, you second it?
I did.
Any further discussion on, all those in favor of recessing the hearing until, what was the date?
2024.
Thank you. 2024. Say aye. All those in favor of?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All set.
I did want to say thank you to the Planning Commission, appreciate all your hard work and the presentation.
Taking time to hear it all out.
It feels like there's only going to be two questions. I know we just recessed this discussion.
Yeah, we recessed the conversation.
You can make a comment.
So Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt.
I have a microphone, so everybody else.
No, it's a simple administrator thing. You have an agenda item for adoption, does that mean you will?
We're not going, we're not going.
Okay, so we're done with this discussion. Thank you.
They're not going to stick on?
As much as I like you guys, no.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening.
Thank you guys for coming and the presentation.
If you're not going to adopt it, I'm leaving.
Thank you.
See you later.
Are you going to?
Thank you, Preston.
I was going to ask you.
Doesn't seem to be real well, we're all on the same page on.
Right, okay. I just was going to ask you to move them to the beginning of that if you were going to, because they've suffered long enough.
Next item is additions or deletions to the agenda and I would like to make an addition regarding the email that we got today, have a consultation with some advice from the town attorney regarding an item at the wastewater treatment.
That would be an executive session or?
Yes.
At the end of the meeting.
What is it we have?
Adding an executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss council's advice regarding an issue from the wastewater treatment.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to add that agenda item.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, any discussion? You already had it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Add that on to the end.
Should we move to strike the item?
When you get there, you just say don't.
Just when you go past it. Next item is to approve our minutes from our special Select Board meeting dated September 3rd.
I make a motion to approve the September 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second. Motion. Tim's the second, and whether you have any corrections, corrections, changes, omissions, errors, anything on the September 3rd minutes?
I have none. I have none.
Everybody good?
Yep.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And a motion to approve our September 4th Select Board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Lead is the motion and Tim is the second, any changes, corrections, errors, omissions, anything on the September 4th minutes?
I have none. I have none.
All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Citizens' comments, if there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so, any citizens' comments? Old Business, Julie's in the papers, do our old business.
Yes, I will be quick. As many of you have probably seen, the way finding signage is up or a good chunk of it is, there are still a few more signs to come in at some key locations, those should be up probably in the next few weeks, waiting on manufacturing piece. Bailey Road, Peter, Arnie and I met with Jim Carroll this past week. Jim has a little bit more research he's going to do on his side and then he will be at your October 16th meeting in executive session to discuss options of moving forward. So he'll be at your next meeting. Just an update, the town had applied for hazard mitigation funds through FEMA. We were just awarded a grant for $90,000 for the generator at the well. So we finally got our generator for the well. So we are, we had our kickoff meeting, we are underway with that. We'll be getting it, that underway, getting the construction portion of that underway and installed as soon as we can. The electrical engineer has reached out to different firms to find out lead times on these devices, we're not sure at this point. So I'll be in touch as we get more confirmation of when it will take place, but we did get awarded the grant. So it was a $100,000 project, 90% grant, so our match to that is $10,000.
That's good.
Yeah, it's great. We've been waiting a long time for that. On that same vein, in that same type of grant, we were, we have been awarded, there's a little more paperwork to still go through with FEMA on this, but we've gotten our preliminary award for the remainder of Route 35. So this is a section, there's one more section of Route 35 close to Popple Dungeon that needs bank stabilization and underdrain. So it's that section, but it does all the rest of Route 35 with the stone line ditching and adding sections of underdrain. So about $750,000 project, so it funds 90%. So their, their funding is $667,000, so our match is 74. So we still are waiting on a little more paperwork, but we have received a preliminary approval on that project as well.
Can we fix the jump?
Yes, we'll fix the jump, which we installed just for you. It's sad that you don't appreciate it, but that's okay.
That section of road has used up, I don't know, millions of dollars of funding that could have been used in other places, but that road is in such sad shape that it's been basically, it needed it all.
Well, the nice thing is we don't have to rebuild that road every five years, so.
I'm sure I'm not the first to suggest giving it back to the state.
We tried already, they wouldn't take it. I did try that, seriously, I tried that. And then we are now, that we are pretty well underway with FEMA for flood recovery from July of '23. We are into the mitigation work, so FEMA has a program 406 mitigation that whatever amount your project cost is, you can match in mitigation work. So Popple Dungeon, go back to Popple Dungeon, Popple Dungeon was $129,000 project under FEMA. So we have available to us $129,000 that we can use for mitigation work to that road. So what we have applied for and been approved for is Popple Dungeon will get a complete six inch road resurfacing. Popple Dungeon was not completely resurfaced even all the way back to Irene because we have issues with it all the time. So the resurfacing, the re-grading, the re-establishing ditch lines, those types of things will, will help tremendously in keeping the road secure going forward. So this mitigation funding will pay for that. So we'll be moving forward with that project. We have another one that we have submitted for the, one of the bridges on Smokeshire, that will be a $247,000 road, so we can get $247,000 of mitigation funds. So we are applying for 406 funds wherever we can. So I'll keep you updated as those get approved. You need your own river. No, no more rivers. And then just a reminder, fall festival is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, so encourage everybody to come out to that. That's it for me.
With some great weather.
Yes, great weather, yes, very nice.
Anybody else have anything on old business? Item, we're just going to skip over, leave that out. And next one is a request for use of economic development funds. Bob Flint is here with Sharon Baker and they're requesting some financial assistance with a building that Sharon Baker owns on the Green. Julie, can you take us to that?
I can, I can. So Sharon owns a couple properties on the Green, actually. One of them, she has recently listed on the market for sale. There are some issues within the building, primary issue being a heating system has failed. So Sharon is requesting funds to replace the heating system in the building, $15,000, you have a quote in your packet. And the ask is that we loan the $15,000 with repayment to take place upon the sale of the building. And this would be economic development funds? Bob, as, as some may not know, I'm not sure, Tim, if you're aware of this process, when an application comes to us, Springfield Regional Development Corporation is our vetting for the financial aspect of things. Okay, perfect. So Bob has cast his wand of blessing upon it and the power you have.
Pretty good. That's pretty good, Bob.
Yeah, there you go. So we are here to, to request approval from the economic, for the economic development fund.
So, so when a person is vetted on a loan like this, where does it fit in legally? Is it in the title? Is it a lien or how does that work or is it just a straightforward loan with just whatever conditions are?
So when we establish a loan, there is a securing document that is recorded in the land record, so much like a mortgage, except it's not a mortgage, it's just a security interest. And there is a promissory note, I take that back, there is actually a mortgage, that gets put into the land records. So when Sharon goes to sell her property and she has a buyer, they will do a title search, they will see our loan and it will be required for repayment. Yeah. So we're secured at that point.
Anybody have any other questions or concerns?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'll make a motion to loan $15,000 for the replacement of a furnace to Sharon Baker from the Economic Development Fund.
Second.
Leave the motion and Ariana, it's the second. Further discussion on? The request for 15, I thought I read somewhere that it's a 10. 12.
Oh, I'm sorry. We had originally.
Hold on a second, sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's going to go, what happened in this little part of the update?
Sorry.
The estimate from Tucker Westney is just under 15,000 and I have some, but I need, I'm requesting 12. I don't need all of it. That's okay, thank you, Julie.
So I'll make an amendment to, for a loan amount of $12,000.
Second.
Yeah, it works something like that. Any further discussion on?
Think that was a really clever way to just make sure it's all going through to reduce it at the last second.
This is what we should be doing with economic development funds, is make it so that you can sell it, so more business can come into Chester.
Yeah.
And that's what we're all about.
And it's good to see the fund is used, especially in a situation where it's needed and someone that's been a member of the community for a long time and has a great, successful business in town. And it'll work out for her and I think it'll work out for the town also, which is important on both ends, which is.
And for the existing tenants and everybody.
Yeah.
We need one of those boom mics.
To take it with, it doesn't un-snappy.
That's okay. All three tenants are wonderful, long-term tenants who pay their bills on time. They're all a little nervous, but I've sat down with each of them individually and explained to them what I'm trying to do because my goal is to be able to, and you read it in my narrative, is to be able to sell the front building and keep the back building as my home and my business without a mortgage. That's the goal. Thank you. It's from nineteen eighty-six.
Uh, any other further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the loan request, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks for your patience and hanging in there for a good hour and a half before we got to it.
Well, come to the next one.
Tell your neighbor.
It's, it's, it's good to see the public involved, the people that come and offer. I mean, this is their chance to voice their opinion and that's where we hear from people. And it helps, uh, because a lot of times things get done. And then when it gets done, people turn around and say, when did that happen? Well, it's been going on at the planning commission level. And this is basically the public hearing at the last chance to, to voice opinions and influence policy and, uh, and, 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 and the, uh, the laws are putting out there, so. Thank you for, for coming. I did say all those favor aye, right?
Yeah, we did, we did vote in the past unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, thanks, good night, guys. Uh, the next item is a request to remove a requirement for a phase-two report on the property, the Hennessy property on Cummings Road. Can you give us a little detail on that?
I can. So some of you may recall that, uh, the Hennessy property on Cummings Road, um, was a property that we put a health order on, uh, a year and a half, two years ago at this point. Um, and this was a property that we were going to be looking at the involuntary acquisition program that runs in parallel with the EPA, um, to get those funds to help the town acquire the property and clean it up. Um, since then, Mr. Hennessy has passed away. Um, we are left dealing with his, with his heirs who want nothing to do with the property. Um, so there's been a lot of back and forth, uh, on, on how to make this work for them as well, because there's a potential look-back liability when you're dealing with this type of issue. So in the meantime, uh, Tim Crosby, uh, who is a property owner in town, um, came forward and had an interest in purchasing the property from the Hennessy estate. Um, he had reached out to me, uh, I have been in meetings with him, with Steve Ancudah, who represented the estate, regional planning has also been involved in the discussion. Uh, Tim's desire was to, um, purchase the property. He had a relationship with John Hennessy years ago, um, and wanted to purchase the property and, uh, clean it up. Um, he would like to restore the house and either put it back on the market or keep it for himself, one or the other. So in a lot of, um, thinking about this, um, we really kind of decided that from the town's, uh, liability side, um, this would be good for the town to not be involved. Um, there was a phase-one done on the property. Um, there was, if, if some of you may recall, there was a diesel spill, uh, there, which is the final piece that let us finish the health order. Um, so DEC has been involved in that cleanup of, of that location and one other spot. Um.
Sorry, I'm laughing because in your notes you wrote Department of Environmental Conversation.
Oh. Them too.
There is a lot of that.
Them too. Dyslexic. Um, so anyway, DEC, we'll say it that way, um, wasn't, has been involved in monitoring. Um, Tim has been in touch with DEC, so he is, and I give you, given you copies of those communications. Um, one thing that has been said to me by DEC, by Paul Miller, who is a firm, you may know, a firm out of Bennington that does cleanup stuff, um, and regional planning, is that the phase-two at this point really is not required and is a real holdup, uh, for Tim. Um, I was a little nervous about being willing to release that. Um, but knowing that the state is monitoring cleanup, um, I feel like letting Tim buy the, which I don't have any say, Tim can buy the property if he wants to, but he wanted my blessing. So Tim buying the property, um, him cleaning it up, him dealing with the state on the cleanup, just removes the town in all of our liability and it gets a property, uh, back onto the tax rolls. Um, and a property that can be developed and just takes all liability away from the town. Um, so the ask, he has now purchased the property. Um, property has already been purchased, he is ownership of it, taxes have been paid. Um, he is asking if we would amend the health order to remove the requirement, um, of the phase-two. All other conditions of the health order remain in effect and he knows that loud and clear. Um, but that phase-two is a hurdle. Um, because if we keep that in there, then he has to comply with that and legally in order for the health order to be met. So the ask, um, is to remove that requirement for a phase-two.
Didn't you send us documentation from some?
They're working with him.
Entity that says that actually there's no sign of diesel.
Correct, correct.
Basically said this ask.
That's the state.
Is pretty okay.
Correct, correct. Which is where I asked for those pieces from the, from the specialists. I don't want to be the one that says that phase-two isn't required, I'm not qualified. So they, I asked for the, the documentation from the specialist and it was proof to us that he actually is working with the people that he's told me he's working with. So with all of that, I feel comfortable in asking this of the board, um, if you would be willing to make that modification to the health order.
Well, I think that, uh, what you were referring to, Ariana, is important because that's the part where they had the two tanks where the possible spill came from.
Correct.
And if that's not testing out that there's VOCs or whatever in there, that's a good sign. And that sure takes a, a big burden off us as far as, uh, not that, uh, enforcement of the health order. The one thing that I want to, that I would like to see, make sure that it's clear that that order part that says about removal of all the trash and everything else, that happens first, you know, you don't build, you know, fix the place up and then we'll deal with this later on or whatever. That whole area, I would hope that that would be the priority first to get everything out of there before you start.
We have had those many conversations, those conversations several times and that part of this health order is not removed. It's just the phase-two, it's just the requirement for phase-two. Everything else stays in effect because that's our enforcement tool. I would rather deal with him on an enforcement issue than deal with environmental on a cleanup issue that could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And if it's not hazardous waste, just junk, I will get no EPA funds to help me, to help the town. So that is a huge potential liability to the town. I'd rather deal with him on enforcement. And the trash, the cleanup is, is still in here. It's just the requirement for the phase-two. That's all we want to remove.
So the health orders on the property.
Correct, that's correct, correct.
So having been in this universe before, um, uh, I am in agreement with this. I think it makes sense if another phase-one were to be completed right now, would not identify anything that would require a phase-two investigation.
Right.
Phase-two investigations can be very expensive. I know the state has funds available to pay for some of it, but if he's working with the state, the state's overseeing the entire cleanup, then I don't see any reason why we should take on any, any additional liability at all.
So, so the only thing that we're changing is, is six D.
D. The result of a phase-two environmental assessment with the areas to be tested to be selected by the health officer or health officers designated.
Right, you're just, you're just removing D. That's it, that's all you're doing is removing that, everything else remains.
Garbage, the vermin, the trash, I mean.
The certification of the well and the septic, all of that, all that stays. Oh, yes, 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 just the case.
Need a new health order or have we amended?
So what I would like to do, I think what we can do is we can just amend this. I think if there is a motion to remove that requirement, um, I can actually probably just attach the minutes to this and it will be satisfactory.
So the motion would be something like, uh, a Chester Board of Health, Public Health Order, uh, given September seventh, twenty-twenty-two regarding the Hennessy property on Cummings Road that we, uh, delete.
Requirement six D.
Requirement six D, uh, the result of a phase-two environmental assessment with the areas to be tested to be selected by the health officer or health officer designated. To, uh, delete that section and that section only, yep.
I'll make the motion.
Please, the motion.
Second.
Ariana's the second, any further discussion on this? I think it's a good outcome.
It's a great outcome.
Taxes were paid, it's back on the tax roll, it's out of it, the headache's gone on our end.
Yeah.
And the testing has been done, so we feel pretty comfortable there.
Yeah.
And, and diesel is one of the easier hazards to remediate because the bugs love that stuff and they just eat it up.
Yes, it sounded like that's what happened with this.
Yeah.
Because over two years, instead of spending all kinds of money and going and, and just.
Bacteria eat it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Something ate it up because they took it and they didn't get any.
Well, and they put in those buffer things so that it essentially doesn't, the diesel doesn't travel through the soil farther. And they left that containment, it's actually still in place now.
Yeah, so there's a lot of energy and hydrocarbons. And so the biota will just use it as an energy source and multiply. They can live either aerobically or anaerobically and, and just chew through the stuff and then turns it into non-hazardous. Yeah.
Pouring the old motor oil on around the foundation to keep the bugs out and stuff is not.
Well, different bugs, these are, these are bacteria.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, next item is a treatment plant funding application. It's for a step-one clear water loan for feasibility and planning for upgrades to the sewer plant.
So if you remember, we, uh, you, we had three projects. Uh, there are three different buckets, uh, but all dealing with water wastewater. Um, this is the third project, this is the beginning phase. Um, we are due for a sewer plant upgrade. Um, and this, uh, this particular upgrade is going to take a look at things like, um, increasing capacity. Um, not just upgrades to the plant itself, but the potential of adding a third tank, um, a better monitoring system. Um, it, it will be a healthy upgrade and we want to take advantage of any funds that are in the state available right now. Housing will be a big part of our discussion as well as future, um, economic growth opportunities. So I would anticipate the planning commission will be very involved in this discussion as well. But this is for the preliminary engineering piece of it. Um, and, yeah.
It's the first step.
Yeah, it's the step one, step one.
And then, then comes the.
Oh, yeah. Correct.
Are, are they going to, when they get to the point where they're going to be doing more planning and looking into this deeper, are they also going to consider the storm waters, uh, issues that, that, that plan has?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Flood resiliency will absolutely be a discussion.
Because I mean, it's almost at capacity now, the plant, but it seems like when the, uh, rainwater hits and the floods hit, it, uh.
Correct.
So we haven't separated storm water yet?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no. Flood resiliency, all that stuff is, is all going to be a part of the discussion about the upgrades to the plant, absolutely. And that will get us funding when it comes to construction. That'll get us big funding when it comes to construction, so.
I, I found it very entertaining to be competitive, like, obviously somebody before has got this big loan thing, taken it by officer of the corporation and just run off with it. It was, I was like, oh, somebody has screwed that several times.
Scared me. I'm like, what is going on? I forgot those were behind me.
I gotta say, I don't know.
Anyway.
Nice bulletin.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or we don't just sign it?
You can, but a motion would be good.
So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion on it? Motion is to accept the step-one clean water feasibility and planning loan to the tune of, what's it, eighty-five thousand? Is it eighty-five?
Uh, eighty-five, uh.
Yeah, eighty-five thousand.
Sorry, it wasn't very specific, was it?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I guess I signed next to mine.
Please, that would be great. Did you have a question? So Naomi is, so Naomi, um, is mostly retiring from Dufrane, um, at the end of the year. However, she is staying on part-time and for Chester. Yes, she is, for Chester and for part, uh, for some limited projects in Springfield. So it's better than having her on retainer. The conversation was, how can the town keep you on retainer? Like how, like what kind of a deal can we strike? Um, and then, I mean, we have so many projects that utilize Dufrane Group and she knows our system. Um, it would be very expensive to go anywhere else. So, um, no, it's very expensive.
She's a wealth of knowledge.
Oh, yeah.
She knows this town better than.
Well, and she's cost-effective and she looks out for the money pieces and she, she's the one who finds me the grants for water wastewater. She's the one who reaches out to me, hey, did you know they've got fifty percent funding on this? They've got other engineers we've worked with, don't do that.
In, in the path, we've looked at other sources just to check ourselves and make sure.
Absolutely, they're always less.
That we're still getting our money's worth and it, it turns out all the time.
Yeah.
We're doing exceptionally well, but what we pay, what we get for service.
There was, we did a job with Thonel and it's, so it's very interesting because they supposedly resurfaced, uh, a system. So they resurfaced all the maintenance, they came out exactly to the hundred in every manhole just the way it was built. In other words, they never littered a cover. No, you just don't.
Just, just by chance, it was all perfect.
It was all perfect, exactly the way it was.
Exactly.
Uh, new business, future agenda items.
So the only thing, so you've set your next meeting date, which is going to be the sixteenth. Um, and then, um, so you, you probably saw an email from Debbie today. Um, we have a request into the trustee of public funds, um, for some work on North Street Cemetery. There, there is a block wall along the river there that is crumbling. Um, so the crumbling and the, um, culvert going into North Street Cemetery, um, is significantly undersized. And so, uh, Rivers Engineers have asked us to upgrade that. So, uh, the request to the trustee of public funds, um, is sixteen thousand eight hundred. Uh, so they have a meeting on Monday at nine AM, uh, to consider that request. Um, I cannot anticipate that there would be any issues, it would come from the trustee's cemetery funds. Um, so just to let you know about that.
Yeah, that's one of their specific requirements, I thought, for expenditure of those funds. And they have a lot of leeway and a lot of the other funds that they can go, but.
They're fun-specific, yes. And there is one specific to North Street. So, um, so anyway, but we have to go through the process. So they have a meeting on Monday at nine, you're welcome to attend, you do not have to. Um, just letting you know that that is the request, so it doesn't hit the taxpayers.
And if more than three of us are.
Let me know so I can warn a meeting if you're.
I can plan not to go. I'm pretty sure I'm busy, when is it?
Yeah. Um, so your next agenda, of course, will be your first, uh, first round of the budget. Um, you'll have your executive session with Jim and, um, you will have the recess, uh, the recess hearing.
I, uh, been having the conversations with, uh, the CCC regarding class-four roads. And what did come up, and I've, and I've done some research and I, and I will share with you, Julie, and share with the rest of the select board also, is that something that would help in the long run as we approach the class-four roads, having a policy on it where it describes our intentions, the rules and regulations that go with it on a policy level. Uh, VLCT has a model policy.
For class-four roads?
Class-four roads and trails. And also besides VLCT, there's a lot of towns all over the state that I've looked at that have a class-four policy for class-four roads and trails. And I've looked at them all and I think maybe it'd be a good starting off point to, to review some of these policies to see if we could model one for Chester that makes sense on what we would like to achieve. Because as we go through the class-four roads and some projects are picking up, Wyman's Falls is one of them that, that is taking a lot of interest and, and there's some work, the town went over and helped clear out some areas to make access to that area. They just wanted some guidance as far as how to approach things and what to do or what, what can be done. And then as other people ask also, you know, what, what's the rules and regulations regarding class-four roads? Can I do this, can I do that, how does it all work?
Better than making up as we go.
Yeah, yeah, so I was thinking.
The interesting thing is that you got to pay attention to is there's a lawsuit in Hungary. The interesting thing is that you gotta pay attention to, is there's a lawsuit in Tunbridge.
Tunbridge.
Right, about trails, trails and modifications of trails. So I think with a lot of cases, we're almost likely to be to step in trails.
That's exactly right. Yeah, that's gonna be.
That's, you're almost, you're almost better now looking at it, you're better to stay in class-four roads and you're determined with trails.
Yeah.
Really? That's interesting. That's Tunbridge?
Tunbridge.
Tunbridge, yeah.
Well, that'd be interesting to bring that up during the discussion.
I can get you the. We discussed it at the last, we discussed it at the last late board meeting.
Yeah.
I can give you the, I can give you the summary of what is going on with that from my packet. Yeah.
Too bad, because I knew it.
Boyer from Massachusetts bought it.
And they're now selling it down. True.
Well, it's it's interesting because we don't have any trails.
We don't have any.
We do not have legally designated trails.
But that is an option, but it'll be a good discussion.
We have, we have class fours that connect the other towns there.
Correct, correct.
Well, it'd be good to clarify where we sit on all this, because as the CCC gets more involved, they need, they need some guidance also.
Um, do you, you're not wanting that for your next meeting?
I I think for the fourteenth, maybe we'll just have a packet with the information so people could.
Fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, whatever. The October meeting, let's just put it that way.
Got it. But you don't want it. But you don't want it, you're so mean, but you don't want it on the agenda as a discussion, or do you?
No, no. I think I, I think we should share the information, and that way anybody could digest it and read it.
And then discuss.
And then, then, then.
Okay, I'll just get you the information.
You know, you do an easy search right now if you really want to get ahead of it a little bit, but.
No, and I I have a spreadsheet that shows, uh, properties that if you took the class-four road out.
Yeah, it's one of the reasons we've never really gone there. Yeah.
All right, that's all I have for new business. Anybody else have anything? I would entertain a motion to go into, uh, executive session to discuss, uh, executive, yeah, right, councils' recommendations regarding an issue at the wastewater treatment.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.